Did your, uh, did your son get off to school? Okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Why did he have to start?
Everyone.
He's in EOP, so you have to cover program.
Joe, can you plug in our microphone?
Oh.
Right here.
So he was up in the cool of the, and right back for the whole summer.
It's still hot in there.
Come on.
I'm just gonna tell the board now. House call. Well, it has to be at my eight, so if I'm a little, if I'm on, it's what I'm doing. I'm paying attention, but I have to do it.
Absolutely.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey.
Hello.
Music for my ears, please.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Fitz's ninety degree weather perfect. Actually be good with this.
Mine had a dead battery of service, but I had to get it anyway. Another one, let's put it that way. No, mine flashed on and then it was gone. It was like, okay.
Huh? I feel like I haven't seen it before.
Yeah, yeah, same.
Ah, get back here. And still at, oh, nice.
Student support staff took the name of pupil, right? So instead of student, I mean, instead of pupil, students, students, staff. Okay, yep, okay.
That would like, I know the answer to that. I mean, the, there's been so many teachers who were, I didn't think we're gonna make it even to one hundred and twenty, but that shows the efforts of everybody, but mostly the charge.
The overall end of the week.
Just thank students. Students. They're not pupils, so I mean, it makes fun of us.
I changed my yesterday, so I told you, I changed in twenty-nine hours ago.
And I said, well, I didn't know I even changed it.
The same thing, this hits because I knew what I did it for email, not for board documents. So weird. And you've lived here your whole life.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the September sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united in its heart, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Thank you, Kathy.
Any discussion?
So moved.
Thank you, VP. Second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Since we have no one signed up for public comments, I will transition to Deputy Superintendent Lynn Rutnick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, um, on behalf of the superintendent, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, uh, he really wanted to express first and foremost a message of gratitude. It was new teacher orientation this past week and the week before, and he wanted to say first and foremost again to the teaching and learning leaders, Carmella and Dr. Chisholm, and those who led those efforts, just absolutely outstanding. Three days of high-quality professional development, a lot of fun, a lot of joy, and, um, really cultivating everything we can to, uh, better understanding around our pillars and our initiatives. And it is, as you will know, soon from Dr. Chisholm, the Year of Instruction. So, um, also, we had a wonderful opening day, and gratitude goes out to the opening day committee and everyone who spoke or sang or really just supported that amazing event. It really brought to life the passion at people we have in our district. And, um, it, it just was a wonderful day. So, thank you, uh, to our, our faculty and staff who came out and really celebrated, uh, welcome home and, uh, the idea that we are absolutely stronger together. Also, um, we want to thank our, uh, teachers, our student support staff, our IE staff, our safety, restorative practice specialists, our principals, custodial staff, and our parents. They deserve a huge round of applause for all they have accomplished to be ready to welcome and bring in our students, um, tomorrow. So we're extremely excited about that. And then a reminder to our parents that tomorrow is, is the first day of student attendance. Be here, it's opening day, that everyone is ready for them. And, um, we want to have a huge shout out and a thank you to our, um, registration department. They have been just working every single hour to make sure that anybody who wants to come, we are welcoming them and getting them in. Um, and also our human resource, uh, department, who's just done an outstanding job of onboarding people even as of today. So, thank you to them. And, uh, another big reminder that the Athletic Hall of Fame dinner is, uh, the twenty-fifth, uh, actually is Monday, and it's the twenty-fifth year of this special anniversary. If anyone is interested in attending, you can still get tickets by contacting Bob Pizzano. And that is it from the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to echo welcome home. That is something that resonated with Superintendent Soler on, uh, on the opening day. So welcome home to our season returning employees, but also to new employees in Schenectady. It was an awesome time and the new teacher orientation, it was great new teacher staff because it was not just teachers. So it was a great event and it was great to see the excitement and the passion of all the new people and the returning people in new roles coming to Schenectady. So it was amazing. Um, I also want to highlight, I attended Keene Elementary School, that's one of my school liaisons, um, one of my school buildings, and it was amazing. They had like a block party a few, like a week ago. And they had students, families, staff, and vendors, as well as food and music. It was just a great festive event to welcome students back and the families back. And they had a lot of giveaways for the students as well. Um, I also, I know Kathy and VP Nohalani were at the opening day, they were able to attend, so I'm not going to share everything. And I'm not gonna use the word that I usually use because I was about to say, it was incredible.
Wait, I thought it was amazing.
It was truly incredible. And that's all I'm gonna say because I will say more and I won't say anything more because I will let Kathy and VP share. But our students were wonderful. Aren't you proud of me? I'm not saying amazing. They were wonderful. I'll pause there because I know they have a lot to share. And if they don't share some of the things, I'll share it at the end of the board, um, the board meeting. I also want to mention three other things or two other things. To continue our relationship with the seventeen schools, the board is going to be connecting with the principals late September, mid, early October to start working on, you know, having conversations about what events are coming up in their schools and, you know, a possible walk-through in the school. So principals, uh, you'll hear from the board members very, very soon. And actually on our website, and thank you Karen Corona, she updated who is the school liaison, the board's liaison for each school. So you can see that on there as well. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that NISBA, so NISBA last year, I don't know if all of you recall, we did the NISBA Resolution Conversation at the board meeting. So that's coming up. So I'm going to just, I'm not going to say much, but either the next board meeting, the end of the month or in October, we will have these new twenty twenty-three resolutions and we will have a conversation about those resolutions. And we have one on the proposal as well. So that's coming soon, but I just wanted to give you all a heads up because I believe the day that we actually have the resolution meeting is October twentieth. Is that correct, Kathy?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
October sixteen.
October sixteen. Okay, thank you. And that concludes my comments. Okay. Um, so I also wanted to welcome everybody back to school. Tomorrow's the first day, it's exciting. I know the kids are getting their hair done, they're doing all of the things. So very exciting time. Um, so I did want to welcome everyone back. I think of fall when I think of back to school and right now, the weather, the way that it's set up, it's very hot. So I think summer has returned to see us off. I know it doesn't end until the twenty-second, but welcome back. Um, and with that, there's obviously a lot of things that are going on within the district. So, a couple of weeks ago, we celebrated, um, the August commencement, and I don't recall if at the last board meeting, right? So I did want to congratulate again all of the students, twenty-one students, well done. So that was really, really great to be a part of. We also had our board development, um, on Saturday, August twenty-sixth. So we had some really great conversation, we're continuing to grow as a board and, and just unite, which is really wonderful, I love that. So that was fantastic. And then on August twenty-ninth, I was invited to go over to Page, which is one of my liaison schools, um, to listen to the fifth grade students there discuss, um, clean energy. And I took notes and, and I won't pull that up right now, but what I will say is is it was amazing to hear these students, eleven and twelfth graders, preparing to go into Central Park in the fall, talk about fossil fuels and plasma and things that I didn't discuss, much less know anything about when I was in the fifth grade. Um, very impressive. They're looking to kind of continue this as they go into sixth grade at Central Park. So we're hoping that we'll be able to kind of support them and to continue the growth. But I did want to appreciate or thank Kayla, um, Kayla Miller and Wally Johnston of Energy for the Common Good, because I believe they started at Page and want it to grow to all of our elementary and middle schools. And then finally, opening day. I'm gonna say it was awesome. That's my word, awesome. It was, um, very, very, the energy in the room was, was fantastic. I think what was so great was listening to Mr., and I'm gonna, Bonner. Right, Michael Bonner. Outstanding speaker, very engaging, um, and you could just feel the energy that he brings to his classroom. And it was just really exciting and, and great to hear him come and speak to everyone. I should have taken screenshots of like all of the comments that he shared, they were really, really good. But I'm hoping that it really reinvigorated everybody to come back because it's, it's a big deal. Tomorrow's the big day. So, um, really great events, I think, over the past couple of weeks, and welcome back.
I remembered where I'm supposed to go. Um, I feel like the weather, it feels more like the last day of school tomorrow, the first day of school. But yeah, welcome back, have a great school year, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Erica. Board member Jamaica?
Hey, y'all. I have no problem with saying the same things I say all the time. So as everyone is going back to school, um, I too have committed myself, um, to set a good example at home and read. This is not the only book I'm reading, but, um, I don't know if folks have had a chance to, to read The Grading for Equity. Thank you so much, making sure that we have a copy. It's rich and deep. I look forward to finishing it, it's, it's really helpful, it is. And speaking of back to school, I hope that everyone remembers the times for each of the buildings, right? So elementary school, seven forty-five to two forty. Middle school, eight twenty-five to three thirty, high school, eight twenty-five to three thirty. The number of times at the beginning of every year that there are parents that are asking questions and I thought it was this, I thought it was that. If we can remember what time to get there and pick them up, hopefully that helps smooth things along. And, and along that, I just hope that all of the, the parents and students remember to ask questions. Don't be afraid to ask. There are people that are in every single building that if they don't know the answer, they know who does. Um, and it's one of the, the pleasures that I always have every year. I don't know something, but I know I can ask that question. And if more of our parents and families feel that same way, I, I just think we'll continue to grow as a district. And yeah, it's just really exciting to start a whole nother year and that we are fully funded. Because so many of us fought for so long to ensure that we received the money that we were owed from New York State. And it took many, many years and a lot of effort and a lot of different tactics. Standing at the Capitol, there were students that spoke directly, there were teachers that spoke. Where is Mike Silvestri? Because knows, knows the road that we've been on firsthand, handing out water when parents, teachers, and students walked from Schenectady to Albany as a final leg on a trip that started in New York City where people walked from New York City and people joined along the way. And our district was that final leg. On top of the fact, uh, that I sued New York State because our kids mean that much. And Schenectady has been a leader in equity and justice and funding, and I am so glad that we continue to move forward and make that happen. And this year, we're just gonna continue to grow and excel and give our students what they need to show us just how truly brilliant they are.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Jamaica and Board Member Vivian.
Good evening, everyone. Welk, I just wanted to say welcome to everyone that is coming back this year and definitely a huge welcome to all of our new faculty members that are gonna be joining us and having a direct hand in impacting our students in a positive way. I'm very excited to see the direction that our district takes this year. So, welcome aboard and to all of our students. Best of luck, we're all proud of you already, we already know we're gonna do great things, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian and Board Member Kathy.
Good evening. I had the pleasure of meeting many of the new teachers and other staff at the breakfast for, um, August twenty-eighth, and so, uh, so I'm, I'm glad to welcome them to the, to the family, shall we say. I also have the pleasure of being at the graduation that Nohalani mentioned, and I once again will commend all of the students who, who graduated here in August. I believe there were twenty-one or twenty-two of them. And it, it's an amazing testimony to their resilience and their, their grit and, and their pursuit of, of, uh, a dream, I guess, basically is the way to put it. The opening day ceremonies yesterday were terrific, I'll use that word. We have many adjectives that we use for these things. I found, uh, Michael Bonner's comments quite, um, interesting. He talked about the four points, four changes in education, four revolutions, basically. He's talking about the industrial revolution and now he talked about the fact that, that the revolution may control us. That, that's the fourth one at this point. He comes from, uh, the Ron Clark Academy, I, I Googled that today, I didn't know much about it. I believe it's down in Georgia. And he has been with, um, many of our, uh, members of the staff and so on. In, in the past, I understand with, uh, certain, certain comments, he did, he did exude a fair amount of energy yesterday. And once again, we of course started out with Alex Torres and the Latin Kings and, and, uh, there wasn't quite as much salsa dancing this year as there was last year, but it was, but it definitely had, had energy there. So, so all in all, we're ready. I would just have one caveat for tomorrow, I, I'm glad to see all the students coming back. I want to, please, please, please remind people, I know it's been all over public announcements, watch the buses. Be very careful, do not pass the buses. The children are excited, they very typically will run in front of the bus or, or behind it when they, when they should not be. So please be careful, uh, going around, uh, and not going around buses. It's been pointed out in the public ads that many school districts, I don't believe we're quite there yet, but have cameras on all of the buses and, and you could be getting, at least I know in Albany County, you could be getting a, a nice little notice in the mail with a, with a fine attached to it if you pass a school bus. So please remember that that is happening tomorrow and, and it's at least two times a day, but you might see buses at other times in the day. So, uh, so that's my caveat, thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to mention Alyssa Cook. She was one of the speakers, uh, there were many great students, but Alyssa Cook, she's a pilot now officially. She's from Schenectady, the first from Schenectady, and I just want to give her an applause again. That's amazing. That is truly amazing. And I do want to highlight the other students that were there, Carmen, and I forgot her last name, but she did the, um, the National Anthem and also the National, I'm sorry?
Sepulveda.
Sepulveda, yes. And she also, um, sung the...
National, the Black National Anthem.
Yeah, I know, lift every voice, I wanted to, lift every voice. Um, I also want to mention that we had African drummers and African dancers, our students, they were phenomenal as well. Also, the Page Pandas, they did, um, Don't Stop Believing onstage. I mean, it was, the, the energy of our students was incredible. And Alyssa, I just want to say, she was a light, she had everyone laughing. It was just a joy to hear her, you know, presenting the speech, so it was amazing. So I just, I want to highlight that. So kudos, and kudos to everyone, kudos to DiCaprio and to Tyrone O'Malley because they were the MCs and they did a great job with the energy. And also Dr. Chisholm, she was the facilitator of everything, you know, of the whole night. And also Deputy Lynn, um, Rutnick, but great job, everyone, everyone, very nice. Shannon, Shannon Tahoe as well, there's so many people and I don't want to keep mentioning names because I may forget someone and I don't want to do that intentionally. You all did, oh yes, Mike also presented. Um, it's just a great job and to see everyone in the room working so hard. And sometimes we don't realize how much work it is, I do realize how much work it is. But it's a lot of work, especially when you're moving so many different pieces. So thank you for all the work that you did and all the educators that also were there, um, in the audience and were passionate.
And we want to thank you because your message on behalf of the board was outstanding.
Thank you.
Outstanding, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to transition to our first presentation, which will be from Carmella and Mike, and they will present, be presenting on grading. So welcome back, and this is the second presentation that they've done for us. And I appreciate you coming back to, um, clarify some things and make, perhaps answer some questions that we may have. So welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having us back. Uh, on behalf of the superintendent, whose name is also on the presentation, sorry that he couldn't be here, we'll, we'll pick it up for him. Mike and I want to come back and maybe get rid of some misconceptions that might be going around on the grading policy. As always, we start, uh-oh. Our district vision, tagline, and values, everything about the grading policy relates to everyone counts, everyone learns, equity, collaboration, and learning, and of course, being a continually improving school district. That's why we, we have something like a change in policy occurring. For pillars? So you notice I put these little flags up on top, red and blue for our colors. There is not a pillar that doesn't get addressed, although I can really honestly say we're gonna have to work on partnerships with families and communities. A change in the grading policy, a change in misconceptions, change in ways that we, we all went to school and we were graded a certain way, right? So, we go to school, we think if we're, we're successful in school, we think, oh, it worked for me. But as you'll see some, from, some quotes later on from Joe Feldman, just because we succeeded in an environment where it worked for us doesn't necessarily that, mean that there doesn't need to be a change. And so while we're educating our teachers and staff members and our administrators and ourselves, I don't think Mike and I feel like we're experts yet as well. We're here trying to help facilitate the process, we all have to learn and grow together. And with that said, we can't leave our parents and caregivers behind.
Um, Joe, if you don't mind. Thank you. So, you know, again, as a teacher, I hate to read what's on the, pretty up there because you can read as easily as I can. So I do want to print, point out a couple of things. The accurately, the consistently, right? You cannot, and I believe I said this the last time, you could not accurately score something accurately, provide information, if you're providing information about multiple things with one indicator. So that is why, you know, and it's in the, it's in what you had last time, that is why that report card breaks the achievement grade out from the other scores, right? That is why you have to say like, is this about the standards, right? The vision, to utilize grading is just now reading, I shouldn't, right? Indicate academic achievement. Again, that goes back to, if this thing, if this, whatever it is, whatever this score is, is about academic achievement, nothing else can be in there but academic achievement. Everything else has to be separated out and reported separately and should be reported separately. And it should indicate progress and mastery. The biggest thing I love in here is that grades should be earned, not given, right? You should earn the grade based on, again, your academic achievement, not on what you do. And then, you know, and I've seen situations where I'm like, phew, that's a higher grade than I think that student really knows and can do. And then when you go back and look at it, you can find out sometimes that that grade is higher because they did a bunch of crossword puzzles for extra credit, right? They did other things, um, their attendance, you know, they raised their hand in class and that got scored and tallied. And again, therefore, their achievement grade is higher than what it should be because if we're, again, if that one column on the report card is reflecting academic achievement, it should be based on what they did against the standards. Okay? Can we click to the next one? So again, a lot of ways, this just goes back over what we've gone over, that it should be accurate. Again, it cannot be accurate if it's measuring multiple things at once. Bias resistant, again, everybody has different biases and like, that is why, again, why you have to use things like rubrics, right? Like, that is what that's about. Like, you can't just read an essay and be like, oh, that's a B. Can't read an essay and be like, oh, that's an A, right? And that also doesn't help students learn because if, if you're just like, there's that's a B and there's no feedback as to why it's a B and there's no like, well, it's a B because you hit this part of the indicator, you hit that part of the indicator, then it doesn't help the student get motivated to know what they can do to fix it. And in truth, I ha, I will use this as a personal story. When I got my, um, when I went back to school after living a totally different life to become a teacher, SUNY Albany made you take two master's level classes. And I will admit that those master's level history classes were intense. Like, I really can remember being like, you guys take four of these? That's a lot. My writing was not up to the level of some of those students. That professor knew I was an education major and said to me, if you keep re-improving your work, I will keep re-looking at it. And in truth, that's how I became a better writer. Was because that professor was willing to be like, I know that you're not, you know, you're taking these two classes because it's part of the program, but this isn't really your program and like, you're never gonna teach the history of architecture probably in high school, right? But we're going to make you a better writer. And you, and I became a better writer because I would get feedback, I would use that feedback, and I would improve.
Yes, can we just go back one, Joe? So I just wanted to, yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to make sure that we're also saying this is adapted from Feldman's work. And so, we are saying that we believe this, but it also has to be put in front of the board when you're considering a policy, do you believe that these should be our pillars? Do, I, I don't think anybody would argue that grades should be accurate. Motivational, a lot of times people think that Fs, a failing grade, will motivate a student. That's actually research-based, a no, that is not true, that's a myth. It is only motivational for a very select few group of students whose parents are also heavily involved, might be helping them with schoolwork, and, you know, grades have always motivated them, they're typically already A students. So, we hear that a lot. And so I want to just make sure that we point that out, that there's a lot of work to do on misconceptions here. And so, does the board really believe when they're thinking through policy changes, do these three pillars reflect what we believe? We know when we look at our other pillars, every presentation goes back to our pillars, or these are pillars as well? Do we believe in these three? Okay? And so we just lifted some quotes from Joe Feldman. This was from a, a presentation with, um, Harvard. And, uh, he did a few things, um, lots of articles, but also podcasts. And last year, during a faculty meeting, we had our teachers listen to a little bit of the podcast. I think the second quote is really important, I, I mentioned it before. I, I mentioned it before. This idea of just inheriting grading systems based on things that we've done in the past is something that we want to look at. It's not sound. Schools have to constantly change and we, we still operate in. Um, I thought I was hearing it in my head.
We're also all hearing it in your head.
Sorry. So anyways, you know, we are constantly trying to change so that we're not looking like the schools of the early industrial revolution. And we still have a lot of way to go, not just with grading. Sometimes we still go into classrooms, right? And there's rows and there's chairs. It looks with a little modernization, very much like that, right? The industrial revolution. So when we're thinking about grading, we are really just familiar with the system that we all went through and we're trying to break our habits of just that repetition of history, things that we experienced that we need to, we don't know much about changing to A, 1 through 4 for secondary. I'm not saying that that's where we're going to go, but none of us have lived in that in our own high school experience. So what would that look like? And the fear of what do colleges say about that? All research and things that we need to do. The other piece is, and I mentioned this the last time, I'll just repeat it. A lot of graduate schools and undergraduate schools do not prepare teachers on grading. If you have one course, like I did, you're lucky. If that professor was good, you're even luckier. I did have a great class and she questioned my beliefs. And that still was hard for me to break patterns in when I was a teacher for 10 years, to, to look at all my points and try to make averaging work to what I think that the kid really knew. Because I thought, oh, I can't break this average rule. What else am I supposed to do? But I know that that kid actually knows more, but I averaged in zeros because I thought I had to strictly contain the averaging rule and average everything that I graded. So it was hard for me, even with, I think, a good class. And so we put some slides together that actually gave us some visuals because last time we felt like we didn't give you enough of those. This one just goes back to grading and percentages. And this piece where people have said, right? If you look at it, there are many more opportunities to fail when you do 1 through 100 than there is to pass, right? It's just plain to see when you can see what it looks like, really, when you're giving a kid a zero through a 64, many more opportunities to fail with averaging in a number score.
So I also want to definitely push one big thing, especially from a teacher's perspective. When we went to, and almost every district does this, when we went to a numeric grading policy, then you start talking about floors, right? Like, because you don't want to set up a situation where the kid is done in the first quarter and it's over, right? And almost every school district does this everywhere. However, it's a huge mistake to do an academic, to do a floor, being like, well, the lowest grade you can put on a report card is a 50. Because then what you are reporting to the parent is a certain thing that means something to them, right? A 50 means something different to a parent than a 20. And that becomes an inaccuracy. That is one, and, and it was one of the biggest problems we faced when we had, when somebody decided that we had to go to numbers and it was forced on us, because in truth, we were at letters before. And teachers and students feel very different when it's an F and it's not this false grade that doesn't really represent anything. The F represents, you know, that you didn't meet the standards. When we, when there's a floor, and again, almost every district who does numbers does a floor, it becomes like this fake thing that really compounds other issues.
Thank you. Next slide. So this was just an example of the power of the zero that people typically, if you don't see it in black and white, don't understand. And it took me a while until Thomas Guskey came, did a presentation and showed us what a zero actually does. A lot of us have lived through presentations, some of us have not, some of us have not done the math, but when you look at this right now, given this kid, right? 85, 85, zero, 85, 85. If you average that out, does that kid's number, which would be a 68, represent what you think, you know, I know that this is just a hypothesis, what you think they really know and are able to do? It looks like either they didn't complete one assignment or they really had a hard time and they might have gotten half of it done and they got a zero for not completing it. Whatever the case may be, that one time has now inaccurately reflected this, what the kid knows and is able to do and does not do anything but punishing them for improvement. Next.
So I like this one, this one and the next one I like too, because you also, as a teacher, have to take into consideration what you're grading, right? When you look at these two scores, right? Again, you have this weird outlier of the third essay, right? By going away from averaging, by saying, you know, you shouldn't use straight averaging, the teacher is then allowed to be like, well, what happened in that third essay, right? Why is it a C minus? If I just averaged, then the kid's a B. But are they really a B, right? Or are they more of an A minus student who had, who, where something went wrong on that? Was it that they didn't understand that content, but they can show that they can write an essay? So maybe I'm like, ah, maybe not an A minus, but like, because I should take into consideration content and skills separately, maybe it's a B plus. But just to average and not give it any thought, gets you an A and a B, right? Even though it's definitely possible that, you know, the students are much closer than is reflective. Again, this whole policy is about teachers being empowered to have the ability to look at grades and make decisions. And make decisions based on their pedagogical understanding of their course and the importance of the course and understanding their students. If we could click to the next one. This one I really like, although I don't love the fact that like, it's set up this way because it's hard to understand where you got that from. You have to understand that every one point really like represents 20 points if you're averaging. So a five is 100, a four is an 80. What I love about this one is, these are attempts, right? Attempt one, attempt two, attempt three, attempt four, attempt seven. I mentioned the last time, I think, packing the parachute. This is the one where I think you really think about packing the parachute. And who would you want packing your parachute? And who would you definitely not want packing your parachute, right? Again, what you really want is somebody who can do it in the end. Again, there's this whole, especially in both Guskey and Feldman, they talk about the importance of later evidence being the more important evidence than earlier evidence, right? So student A is a perfect example, right? Student A couldn't do it in the beginning, but then on the last two attempts got fives. Student B always got a four, right? So I guess the question would become, which one would you really want to pack your parachute, right? Is it the student who moved up and got it at the end? Also, like, if you look at student C, didn't try a couple of times, but every time they tried, you can see the grades moving up, right? Again, that is why in truth, if we're talking about attempts and these, and this is labeled as attempts, which one would you really be like, yeah, that's the one I trust to pack the parachute and which one wouldn't you?
And so I would just like to add for this, what you really again see is that any time that a zero is averaging, it really affects a kid's grade. And again, it's this idea of punishing a kid for actually improving. So I got better, right? In the case of D, I got better, but I still got a 4E. That doesn't reflect what I know at the time of the report card. I got better in the case of student C and I still got a 63. It doesn't reflect that I tried and got better. So what is the point of really of education if not for kids to improve and for us to help them improve in learning? Next slide. So this was a sample. It is random, completely random. I'd like to thank the deputy for gathering this data with our Office of Planning and Accountability. We use social studies specifically because I, if the social studies teachers are going to be mad at me, it's okay. They know I have a relationship with them and that this is just kind of looking at a sample. It's not blaming anyone, we're not accusing anyone of anything. We're just looking at some numbers here. And the levels are here just to kind of help to show, you know, the kind of range in grading. I really want to preempt this with saying that while we're using the region, Regents as a standard score, it is still only one time that a kid comes in and takes this test on demand and could very well be a bad day and sometimes really a flawed Regents exam that is sometimes very biased in itself, depending on the questions that are asked. Well, that's a topic for another day. So when you look at some of these examples, I'm not going to do them all, but you might look at, let's say, E, where the student is a pre-IB student and they received a B-plus grade, but then only received a 70 on the Regents. So if we're thinking that the Regents is held on a day where the kid has been able to do their best and a, a strong exam that's really kind of unbiased, then you might say that that score, the course grade, is inflated by effort. We don't know that for certain, we're just looking at the sample. You might say the same thing with student H, where it looks like there's a larger level of inflation. So sometimes we think that, you know, a grading policy is really about just, it's a topic for conversation for later on, that administrators just want everybody to pass and they don't want kids to do any work. When, that's not the case at all. We do believe effort really does help students and that's a process that we need to help kids understand by showing them how they correlate, but not by punishing them when they don't get something right. So these are just discussion items that we can talk about today if you'd like, or if you can look at, again, another article that goes through Feldman's claims and myths, true versus fact, or fact versus fiction. And I think we've gone through some of these, but it's really about our beliefs. What do we really believe? I know that that last bullet is just, a grading policy is just the start. And so I'm here helping with this understanding of the policy, but really my work and the work ahead of our office is really the professional development and the communication, not just for our parents, not just for our teachers, but for administrators as well. So that this does not feel like this has just been put upon anybody. Is that everything? I think that's everything that we have, but if there's any kind of bullet point that you want to discuss, we'll, we'll definitely do what we can to answer any questions.
Thank you. Board members, questions? Board member Kathy.
Carmella, is there, are there any schools, I'm talking K to 12, that have already implemented, implemented this kind of grading equity policy? And, and how is it being received by colleges? You know, how are, I, I mean, I have to say, I don't know how colleges now know what a particular grading system in a particular high school means.
Yeah, they don't. They don't. And I don't think that unless you're trying to do this work and, you know, and can testify to that you're, that you're trying to do this work, they don't. So it wouldn't be any different. I think the, the move to Alpha has been used by other districts. I think what's more rare is secondary doing numeric 1 through 4. And we're not there yet. We're definitely not there yet. We are, you know, entertaining more discussions with Joe Feldman. I have another meeting scheduled with him next week to learn from other districts. There are other things that he will do for districts too. He will hold community events for caregivers and parents that want to learn more. He will hold a session for, for the board. These are things that we can entertain so we can ask him about his expertise. He is working with other districts as well.
So what do you mean by moving to 1 to 4 or all of that?
So, I mean, if you really looked at what he would recommend, he would say 1 through 4, even versus an A through F. But before he can do that, our, our departments have to spend, center a lot of time around equitable assessments, valid assessments and rubrics. And creating a rubric in which we're all kind of scoring the same way is more difficult than people think. The language in a rubric really has to differentiate between the 1, the 2, the 3 and the 4 and those verb choices become highly important.
Has Regents, because you showed Regents exams there, that's an example. Are they moving to any of this at this point? Do you know?
We're hoping that, that there won't be Regents very soon.
Well, I understand that.
But I will say this, the Regents, I can talk for, for social studies, does use rubrics that are created and tested and tested again. And we have to spend a lot of times before we can even get into, our social studies before they can even get into correcting, have to spend a lot of time training on those rubrics. And then they use practice papers for kids who were field-tested to show, you know, okay, you know what, sometimes that rubric didn't work out quite right and the kid should get the four because there was a flaw in the rubric.
Carmella, you may want to talk a little bit about year one implementation and year two, how we, you know, were out at buildings and then last year, put out our operating procedures. And this year, we're trying, you know, so we're two years, I mean, this has been a 10-year discussion, but actually doing some, some things where Mr. Sevastri did a Q and A as well.
So one thing I do want to answer Kathy's question is, there's a lot of actually people in the Midwest, because like, a good five years ago, under another leader in the district for curriculum instruction, we were reaching out to, and the name escapes me now, but a lot of this work was done in the Midwest, where there are schools who have done this, where there are schools who went to like, these are the common assessments and these common assessments help you score, you know, determine the grade, especially the common summative assessments. You know, what they really pushed back on was, you know, there actually seemed to be a dip, you know, in the first couple of years because kids were like, oh, what do you mean? I don't get the extra points for X or the extra points for Y. But in truth, the overall achievement, the overall understanding, because when the kids start realizing what my grade is really based on is if I can do the work, not if I make, do your crossword puzzle, you know, they start being like, oh, I can't rely on that crossword puzzle anymore to boost my grade. So that's definitely happened.
So Lynn, I think what you're referring to is just that we have been doing this work for many years. Before this cabinet came along, we did, during COVID, worked with Thomas Guskey. Everybody was part of that virtual presentation. Last year, Joe Feldman did, just for the secondary, a virtual presentation. We're now working on that cohort of teachers. I did list those teachers. I think they're next on the slide deck. We've got 20 teachers in various subjects and grade levels, mostly represented by the high school, which is really, I think, where we need, because those credits and those grades start to accumulate, where we really need to do our most work. And the school leaders are up there. I had to beg, borrow and plead with the Crescendo Group to allow me to be part of it because it's really for building leaders who are working with the teachers. But I just said I would, you know, try not to talk that much and be a fly on the wall. That will be hard for me, but I want to do that. And Courtney Fenner is our equity facilitator from the Crescendo Group and she has been amazing. She really is a former educator and she has worked in K through 12 schools as a teacher in urban environments, suburban environments, and I think she has been well-received. Again, we did the grading for equity, grading parameters one year, and then the parameters went to operating procedures. And again, last year, every faculty, every school secondary, I think even at the elementary too, had a faculty meeting where we did a PowerPoint presentation that I shared with you guys last time. So it's been many years.
Thank you. Board member Jamaica.
Yeah. Thank you for the, the rehash and additional information. As a parent of children across multiple buildings, one recently graduated, two things, the 1, 2, 3, 4 at the elementary level, for me, has been helpful because it very much says, is my child at level, above, below? And it allows me to ask questions, okay, why is he below? What is, what are the skills that he needs to learn or information? The other, if I'm hearing you correctly in the conversation with Kathy, this is beneficial to our students who want to go to college because it's, it's knowledge-based, it's evidence-based, it works on the content that they actually know. And I'm remembering, I don't know how many years back, there was a study done that something like 80% of students that went to Hudson Valley Community College needed remedial classes, meaning they graduated high school, but still did not have the knowledge content to actually start college courses. And what it sounds like to me is that we are now looking to implement a grading policy that aligns with the knowledge of the students graduating and being college-ready. So if a college looks at a transcript and sees the GPA, So if a college looks at a transcript and sees the GPA that matches the letter grade, then it's a true translation of the knowledge they hold versus the slide you showed where the difference between the Regents and the score, there's not that alignment. Am I hearing that correctly, that we are better preparing our students not only to be successful if they choose to go to college, but the colleges that accept them are actually getting the students that the report card showed?
That's correct. And what you refer to as, was not just Hudson Valley, it was a national trend, yes, that many students were leaving high school and needing remediation in their ELA and math classes before they could even take an intro course. So that is actually what we are trying to do. It doesn't mean, for those people who are concerned about effort and attendance not being on a report card, it will still be there. We have to work with Infinite Campus to make sure that the design of our report card is what we believe it should look like. So that a college would still see, if a kid got a, and this is very rare, people love to use this example, and I used to do it too, that if a kid got an 80 and was absent 20 times, what does that mean? Well, that would still be, that is, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. It, like, that fear that that happens a lot, that is very, very rare. Yes, we do want, do not want to punish that kid who, for some reason, just knows it all. And there's a few of those. But we all know that there's a correlation. It doesn't hap, it just doesn't happen. Kids have to be present, and kids have to try to learn. There's all kinds of evidence around that. We talk about growth mindset over and over and over again. It's true. It's true. I mean, some people are kind of brilliant at birth, but it's not what we really believe that school is about.
Vice President Nohalani.
So I do have just a quick question that I was thinking about from the first iteration. So looking at bullet two, we're talking about the additional time that the students are given. And so I don't want to look at it from the penalties piece. I'm looking at it from a behavioral perspective. For those students who do submit their assignments on time, how do we continue to encourage and/or keep that morale up? What would be the benefit for them to do it on time when they know they can do it later?
So in truth, a student who does their work on time does get better feedback, if we're being honest, right? The policy, especially as written, also is, says a D at minimum, right? Like, it might be that that's all you got. The teacher is going to be like, listen, you failed, but you got five weeks if you do the, and sometimes it's like, I'm going to give you one, I'm going to give you something, like, that covers most of the quarter. You can do that as a teacher. Covers the content of the quarter. It's like, if you can do this, you get a D. But you are not going to get the feedback, right? You're not going to get the extra, the extra time, the understanding of what it was. In a lot of ways, we're like, what we're really trying to say is like, do you have this and you just didn't do it? Or do you not have it? Like, that's what we're trying to figure out in that extra five weeks.
I have a question about that, because I feel like, too, like, a lot of misconceptions are going around about this grading policy, and not to, like, take your next question after me, but it's almost like, from the behavior standpoint too, like, you can't cram a whole quarter of work into the last week and show mastery and skill in those assignments to get the high score. So it's almost like, like you said.
Yeah, it's extremely rare. It's extremely, very rare. I mean, I, listen. I had a student who came to school very rarely, right? But every time this student came to school, I'd be like, do you want to take the test? She's like, yeah, just give me the test. And I'd give her the test, and she could do it. She got 80s on tests. Like, under an older grading mindset, that wouldn't hap, like, I was just like, yeah, if you want to take, do it, go, show me, right? And like, under an older grading mindset, that student should fail. And I really have a hard time believing that that student should fail, right? But, because they could do it. But they are the rare, rare, rare occasion where that happens, right? You're right, the student who doesn't do the work and tries to cram at the end probably will not get the achievement grade they get. And if we're being honest about what a D really gets you in a course in high school, it gets you a diploma, right? It doesn't get you much else, right? Like, it's not like that D is being compared to the kid who's getting As and Bs. They are in two different worlds in a lot of ways.
I think also, you know, based on growth mindset research, we want students who are putting together things on time to also be challenged in other ways. Because typically, if it's just about a score and not being challenged, kids tend to, when they do get challenged, fall apart. So that, that is something that we constantly want to do. Yeah, you did it on time. Was it hard? Was it easy? What else can I give you? Because we want to be able to make sure that, you know, we are giving kids that appropriate challenge. And it is true, they've said before, I can't remember, growth mindset researcher right now. Carol Dweck has done tons of research on that, where kids who were just motivated by an A and did the work typically crumbled when they had a challenge in front of them. And then kids who are, you know, I don't care about this grade, but, oh, I want to put this together, and I want to do this, and I want to show, I can do it, I can do it, you know, typically fared much better.
Board member Vivian.
Hi. So I do have some questions. I generally try not to say much, or at least just for the sake of saying it, but I wanted to be thoughtful and purposeful in my questions about the policy. So I did read Mr. Feldman's book, and I also read the interview transcripts that was attached to the presentation. So a couple of questions. One, are we looking at proposing like a 50% rule in the grading?
So no, because right now with, at least for the high school, we're doing A through F. So you wouldn't need a 50% rule. So the F is just signifies failing.
So even in the future, if we do end up adopting this policy, no 50% rule is going to be adopted in any grading policy?
It would be, well, if we do it as proposed, you would, we would still be staying with A through F, and maybe one day, if we could get there, a one through four, after we have plenty of conversations with colleges and, you know, guidance counselors and making sure that we're on the right path, but an F signifies a failing grade.
Okay. So my next question is about late assignments. Is it, is it being proposed based on what Feldman is discussing, that a student should not suffer a penalty for turning in work late?
Yeah. In the academic achievement section, we would prefer that kids do not get a penalty for handing something in late. Now, again, there are things that teachers can do. They can say, well, this no longer reflects where we are. I want to give you something different. And teachers, if our departments come together and work together, we can lighten the load by saying, well, during this time of year, what would we propose for that? Because we don't want to penalize the teacher for having to, to grade, you know, 20 items for 10 students right before the gradients. And I don't really think that that's really, why give a kid a homework assignment that's way past what you're doing right now? You want to give them something more reflective of the work that you're doing at that time. But again, as we work with departments, we could lighten that load if departments come together and say, what would you say is the beneficial thing to give kids right now that would make it easier for us to not have to grade a bunch of past homework?
So the reason I ask about that is because I know that Feldman talks a lot about a student's, or nurturing a student's natural intrinsic motivation, right? And focusing more on intrinsic motivation rather than rewards-based motivation. And if you penalize a student for not turning in their work on time, if at all, then you are going to therefore deteriorate their intrinsic motivation. However, I have some questions concerning that. Intrinsic motivation, how I understand it could generally be described as self-discipline, being self-motivated. Not every child has that. This is something that is generally modeled in the home environment, or not at all, or it could just be something that that child generally struggles with, regardless of their home environment, regardless of the particular classroom environment. So I know that there are concerns academically. There are several PhDs, education reform researchers who take great umbrage to not negatively grading a student for turning in their work and relying solely or primarily where there are tougher expectations on that student. Overall, they have a higher GPA, they have higher standardized test scores, and they have a higher graduation rate, and a less likelihood of dropping out of school within their first year, which would have resulted in what people are concerned with, grade inflation.
So again, I don't have, what I can tell you is my own experience. My own experience is, when you give the kid the opportunity to make it up, they do it. If they do it, if they do it, they don't all do it, right? Like, they don't, there are tons of kids who are like, they take the zero, they never make it up, they let it go. I can also tell you, by passing a policy, you are putting a rule in effect that says when there is an actual deadline. Without a policy, there is no actual rule, right? There is, without a policy, you have no rules. You're putting in this rule that it's the middle of the next quarter. You're putting in a rule with this policy that says, not only is it the middle of the next quarter, it can't happen in the last quarter, right? Those things exist in this policy. I can tell you what I've seen from students in my room, right? That's what I can tell you. I can tell you what being able to try and improve my grades did for me. It made me a better writer. I've seen it make my, my students a better writer. I've seen my Regents scores improve when I started doing that. That's all I can say.
So then I have one more question, and then I will leave you guys alone.
No, no, it's fine. I actually enjoyed the conversation.
And I appreciate it too, because you've given me that feedback. I really appreciate it, and I think that's very, very important for this public conversation, right? And for the public to have this understanding.
No, it's a good discourse, yeah.
So in regards to homework, in the interview that was attached to the presentation, if I understand correctly, Feldman kind of gave an example or a worst-case scenario, right? If you have a student who doesn't necessarily have supports at home, or both parents at home, to make sure that the homework is getting done. Or maybe there's a student who has responsibilities once they get home, and they really just aren't going to be able to, realistically speaking, turn in their homework. That it is unfair and inequitable to penalize that student's grade by not turning in the homework. And then he goes on to present a different way for a teacher in the classroom to present motivation for a student to complete their homework, right? So he gave the example of have a chart in the classroom, so then you can do a comparative run, and so the students can get that visual. So students who did the last three homework assignments had a much higher score on the related quiz, as opposed to students who did not turn in their homework, right? So that I agree with. However, I don't see the benefit of eliminating a grade for homework altogether or not requiring homework as a whole. I think that it's, it calls for a thoughtful conversation. You know, homework should be thoughtfully assigned, not excessively assigned. It has to specifically relate to the unit, it has to specifically relate to or encourage practice for whatever exams or quizzes are coming up in the close future. On the flip side, going back to the student in the scenario that he gave in this interview, if that same student who still can't do their homework at home, if we go by his thought process, that student is still going to receive a negative impact. Either A, they have a negative impact on the grade for not turning in it, if that's the grading model we follow, or they're not going to score adequately on the upcoming quiz or the test because they still weren't able to do it. So it's still a negative impact if we follow that thought process. So I would think that a more equitable move in that situation to help lift up students who don't necessarily have supports at home is to make sure that we have after-school supports for tutoring or supervised study hall, where support for the homework is established and provided to students. I would feel like that would be more equitable, as opposed to how many in the public do feel that this is just another way of lowering standards in the name of equity. And it can kind of seem a little bit pedantic when we think about it. And I just, I don't want us to go as far as instituting what can be considered draconian measures in order to lift up every student, but really look at how we lift up each child according to their individual need in the name of equity.
So there's a, there's a lot there, but I'll just say a couple of things. One, really, the biggest problem with grading homework is that you're putting value into practice that could invariably lead to misconceptions with students, because, for instance, when you give math practice at home and a kid doesn't have it, the only thing you're reinforcing is them doing it the wrong way. So homework has to be definitely worthy, first of all, which is very difficult to do if our students didn't get it during the class time. And if they don't have somebody who can then help them with a misconception at home if they weren't getting it. That is one of the biggest problems. No one is saying that you can't give homework. Practice, just like for athletes, is very important. But grading practice becomes problematic, problematic, especially when kids have not mastered it and then take it home and have no help. That is inequitable. I do think there are times, and many times, where, where kids have to do writing repeatedly for all of the reasons that were discussed today. But allowing kids time with you, with feedback, and then allowing practice again, then maybe coming back in and saying, okay, we've all got it mastered here, now I'm going to correct it, is, is fine. But I, I understand your concern. You don't want everything to be kind of thrown out. I think it does require further conversations, especially for classes where, you know, the rate is going kind of fast, and kids need to do the work. Predominantly, that's kind of reading, I think, versus, and you can't really measure whether or not a kid has read. A lot of times, strong hot head-based classes, we need kids to read at home, because you can't take that time in class. But how do you even grade that, right?
So yeah, I think, yeah, like, moving forward, like, obviously, what's necessary for this current social studies is not going to be necessary for AP Chemistry. But again, I think that just eliminating the grade for homework across the board, because then again, when you're dealing with a child who does not have natural-born intrinsic motivation, what is the point of them even doing the homework at all?
Well, I mean, the point is to learn, right?
Correct. But when a child is not naturally motivated to do it, why not implement a grading policy where there is a healthy combination of both rewards-based motivation and cultivation of self-discipline, self-motivation?
So I would say this, again, we have to talk about what is the homework, right? What is the homework? And again, there, this is, and I will talk about this as a personal story, right? I could read a book, walk into your classroom, and have a conversation. Kill the conversation. Write the essay, right? You know what I didn't do? I didn't do my guided reading. I didn't answer the questions that you gave me. And in truth, and maybe this is my own bias and why I do appreciate some of this, my grades suffered because I went to school at a time where they took two points off every time I didn't do a guided reading. But yet, that didn't help me in the classroom, right? Again, like, we want to be careful when we're grading practice, because what should matter, and again, in this policy too, what does matter is, and it does say, like, in homework would be more of a formative assessment, if the summative assessments are higher, that's what should matter.
I know, Vice President Nohalani wants to ask.
I just, really quick, I think this is really good conversation dialogue. Definitely some really great questions. I have more. I'm not going to ask them tonight in the interest of time. However, I want to make sure that I understand this correctly, right? Like, right now, currently as it stands, we do not have a grading policy. We're here learning a little bit more about what it is that you're recommending, and it will come to the policy committee for us to have more in-depth conversations.
Correct.
Right? Okay. And then can we connect with your team as the committee?
Absolutely. We can do whatever we need to do. And again, there are other resources. We, again, are not the, the national experts. We're just doing the best that we can with what we know. And so, you know, when Vivian said, is there any research, is that, is there any research? I don't think there is, to your, to answer your question. But I wouldn't want to say definitely, without kind of asking Feldman if there is, or looking for it myself. And, and, you know, we're just here to try to tell you what the committee has been working on and recommending, and the path that we think. But we don't necessarily know that every single point is, is ready. You know, you can do several things. You can scaffold this. You can say, we're ready for this, this, and that. We need some revisions. But it's, you know, it's exactly what you said. It's, right now, we're making recommendations. It would go to the policy committee. It might come back several times. I know that that has happened in the past, so.
I know there is research that the way that grading is happening now in the United States is not effective. And I can share that with the board. I know that there is evidence that it is not working, but I, if you don't mind, I'm going to just share a few things. I think also with this discussion is, what's the purpose, right? What is the purpose of grading? What is it that we want our students to get and our families to get from the grading? What is the purpose of homework? Because those are conver- Because those are conversations, I mean, we're just going with status quo. You know, these are things that we all went to school, we had homework, we got a grade. What did that mean? I mean, hey, yay, woo, be F, hmm, you know? I mean, what does that really mean to a child? And one of the things that in the article, and it's a very, I thought it was a good article, the Harvard article, what Feldman mentions too is that there is some proof that students actually get, become more motivated. It is a paradigm shift for them though, right? Because at first they're like, wait, I, I'm not getting a grade on this? You know, so it is going to be a change, not only for teachers, but also the students that when they are doing the work, just like, I think the example he gave was, um, a coach, basketball, right? They have many practices. At those practices, it is a time for students to hone on their skills. And the more they practice, the more they get, I, I mean, many of us have seen our students get motivated when they're, you know, practicing and they see improvements. He, to me, he align, not to me, he aligned that with homework. But I see it as what's the per, you know, what is our purpose? What are we using currently homework for? And I know these are not questions, but I just wanted to mention some of those things. Um, also, there is a lot of writing, Dweck is one of them, that talks about the growth mindset. And I see Feldman as you, as using growth mindset in a grading system or framework. How are our students excelling? What was interesting in the article, he actually mentioned that there was a dip on some of the students that actually have high scores. That theirs actually dipped because they are very savvy at knowing how to sit in the class, behave, I'm paraphrasing, but behave, say the right things, act as a good morning. So they were being graded not on their actual knowledge, but on certain behaviors, certain, you know, things that they have learned culturally and how to behave. And some of the students who don't have that savviness, quote unquote, were being dinged for it.
So there's a lot, but I will send some research, and now I do have questions. And I'm going to be more of the devil's advocate. I'm just going to be, okay? Not too much because you had a lot of, which is good, which is good. Um, but my question to you, and it's kind of, uh, and I think Vivian, Board Member Vivian kind of mentioned it. What do you say to people who are saying this is lowering our standards? Our students are not, and it's twofold, I'll start there. This is lowering our standards. This is some kind of a, you know, of a gimmick to, um, to make it seem like our students are doing better than they are doing.
I would say we, that's, when you look at those region scores, that bears out that in some cases, some students' grades will go down, some students' grades will go up. But what we will be able to say is, is that this grade, this achievement grade is based on what the student can, knows and can do against the standard. Like, that's what you really, I mean, and again, there's a lot of arguments for everything, right? One thing I will say is, and I will put this in there because I've been thinking about it, we don't have a grading policy right now, right? We have no policy right now, which really means anything can happen at any time, right? You want to be worried about, you know, grade inflation? Don't have a policy, right? We can really fix a lot of problems. And again, maybe we do learn things as we go through this process, right? Maybe we're like, oh, this is doing this. But when people say that this is about raising grades, it's not. It's really about getting to a true grade. And it is also about, what I will say it's also about too, is that making sure that like, a kid sitting in Classroom A and Classroom B are getting, it's, it's called inter-rated reliability, right? That they are getting as close to the same grades based on the same ability at the end, you know, at the end of the course to be able to, against the standards. And not that one teacher believes in extra credit, which is like, you know, go look these things up on the computer and, you know, and one teacher's like, no, I don't believe in that. It is a, uh, what it does is it levels the playing field across the classrooms.
And it's interesting when you mention inter-rated reliability, because that's actually a question that I have. So how are we, in moving forward, when we start, if we pass this, how are we messaging, because we have seventeen buildings, right? Elementary, middle, you know, um, uh, high school. How are we messaging and providing additional? And I know you mentioned professional development. What would that look like? And that might be too soon to ask, but what kind of professional development? What's the messaging? How are our administrators being, um, you know, trained to have these types of conversations with our staff? So that even though we are seventeen different buildings and there are nuances between each building, that there is some kind of inter-rated, inter-rated reliability? And I know you mentioned rubrics as well, so.
We have a lot of work to do. And we, and this is just the start. Uh, we will need to do, you know, we have twenty teachers in a cohort. That's clearly not enough. So that is why I have, um, a meeting with Joe because I realized, wait a minute, we've got to go at a much faster rate, um, and dispel some of the misconceptions. Um, I also want to make sure that I say this too. We are not changing teachers' syllabi. We are not saying exactly right now, you know, what you are grading. We have a lot of work to do that within the departments to make sure that we are all accepting the same things and accurate measures of what the content and, and married with the skills really are. So I would say to people who think that we're lowering expectations, that a grading policy doesn't lower expectations. I also want to say that a lot of our teachers are already doing some of this work. And so to come up here and, and act like they are not, many teachers have moved away from homework. Many teachers have seen that only students who have some help or support at home are getting that help and then their grades are inflated. Uh, many teachers do redos. Uh, many teachers do all types of things that promote growth mindset and effort without grading it and show that correlation that Joe Feldman did. That's the best thing to do, is to, you're not, uh, teaching a kid a lesson. And when I say that, I'm saying that facetiously with a grade. You're teaching kids lessons by showing them how effort and redos and makeups actually work. That's what we do in real life. When you fail, um, the driving test, you know, so first of all, you get the permit, that means nothing. Then you go, you take the driving test and you can't do the three-point turn, so you fail the first time. I'm a driver now because I get to do it again. I got a redo, right? So that's what really life is about. I'm sure that I've fumbled a lot of times during presentations before this. Bernice, you might have seen me do that, really, really nervous, but you guys still allow me to come back, right? I wasn't fired. You're, you, I sometimes misspeak. It's just this idea that, that we're teaching a life lesson is really not true about what life really is like.
So Bernice, I, I apologize, really quick, any study that you have that you're willing to send to us, I think would be very, very helpful in getting us, you know, a full, well-rounded, you know, that thousand-foot view picture of what this can look like, you know, in real-time application. I would like to offer, if it's okay with you and if it's something that the board will be okay with, I have accumulated, I would say, a healthy number of studies that suggest a little bit of the opposite of what's being suggested. So I understand that we are working with Mr. Feldman and what he suggests in his book. I think for me, I just want to stress that I really would like to see us look at his work, um, in a more objective and a critical manner and not what can be seen as a, um, like a sycophantic manner. His work is not infallible. There is not empirical data to back up everything that he's saying is a better model for grading. So I just want to encourage us to look at that honestly and also to thoughtfully consider the objections that the public has raised, that parents have raised, that we give a thoughtful, um, consideration and go back to the drawing board and really apply the thoughtful consideration to those objections instead of mollifying those objections and dismissing it. Or at least that could be the message that we send if we don't handle this carefully.
And I just do want to say, all due respect though, I do want to highlight that we did have a bunch of experts besides Feldman on the committee that worked on this. So I, I do.
Yeah, and there are experts who say the opposite. So that's what I'm saying, like just having that balance to you. That's all I'm saying.
No, absolutely, absolutely. But I do want to also highlight all the people that worked on this because I know grading like now, and I think this is a good conversation, it is not an easy topic. It is not. So I appreciate you. We'll probably ask more, you know.
Real quick about the report card, real quick about the report card, because, um, the proposed report card, if I'm seeing the sample correctly, um, it allows for all of that, some of, like, we're talking about a lot of different information. It allows for that and actually encourages and requires teachers to share that information as well, right? So it's, here's the knowledge content based on the standards that our students have on this subject. This is where they stand. Here's where they are on participation with homework. And that they need to put additional information per se about, hey, here's how your student could do better, which not only then alerts the, the family structure, but also the staff in the building for the wraparound services that we already have, right? So it gives, if I'm seeing the report card correctly and, and, and hearing all of this really thoughtful dialogue, we are moving in the direction of identifying the needs that will make this child more successful, um, looking for opportunities to connect them to services that already exist inside our building and then having high expectations for them to be successful. If, if, if all things worked perfectly, which they don't, right? But here we are, again, like you said, there is no grading policy and everybody gets to do whatever the hell they want to. Um, I, I look forward to seeing all the evidence, like Vivian and Bernice, like, thank you for doing that extra work and finding additional information for us to be mindful. Um, and thank you for coming back and having this conversation with us because of the questions that were asked, right? I, I absolutely, I, I just want to say, we are doing that thing of listening to the people who have questions and answering those questions, um, so that there's a full understanding because that is the district we are. So thank you.
I, I want to thank you both and, and the grading committee as someone who's, um, traveled along with them and, um, helped move this forward. This has been a two-year conversation. It's been really valuable. There's, we have leaned into a productive struggle, um, with many of the stakeholders. But I, I mean, we're sitting amongst the teachers who are doing this work. And, and I, I just want us also, also to be mindful that we're about to embark on another year. So another year of zeros and not fifties could make an impact on a child's life. Another year of averaging and not being able to turn that off could really impact, negatively impact a child's life. And, and I say that, you know, on behalf of the superintendent, that has, who gets to manage and make some of these decisions about grading without a grading policy, right? Um, just, but thank you so much for coming up and sharing and, and, you know, leaning into the productive struggle. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we would like to welcome Dr. Chisholm, who will do, who will present, um, for the Office of Teaching and Learning. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members, Board President Rivera, Deputy Superintendent Rucknick. Um, well, the Office of Teaching and Learning has been busy. We will continue to be very busy on behalf of our students and families. And so, um, we wanted to present Y2I, Year Two Instruction. Um, so the last couple of years, um, we, as a district, have put an emphasis on the climate and safety, we've put an emphasis on capital improvement, building augmentation, secondary redesign, professional development, community schools and enrichment programs, and curriculum and assessment. And so that's a lot of moving parts in a short period of time. And while every year is a year of instruction, this year is specifically the Year Two Instruction because of an even sharper laser focus on classroom instruction, ensuring that shift really from the effort to the impact. So of course, our district vision, this work embodies pretty much basically the continually improving school district and dedicated excellence in teaching and learning. Uh, everybody counts, everybody learns in our values of equity, collaboration and learning. As for our pillars, the Year Two Instruction aligns with the student and graduation success, passionate people and efficient systems and equitable resources. And that'll all come out, um, further in my presentation here. So why, why to instruction, the Year Two Instruction? That is, one, because we really want to create this instructional focus. It is aligned to our DSEP and our SSEP as it relates to, um, the non-negotiables of, of instructional practices that we like to see in every classroom across the district. And additional, in addition to that, excuse me, um, it aligns to the receivership goals for Keen. So, um, they have decided to use this walkthrough tool and the data garnished from this as one of their demonstrable improvements. So hopefully, we'll definitely see some improvement with Keen and meeting those goals. It also helps to set this clear expectation for teaching and learning and improve the communication. So more communication between the building administrator, the teachers, the instructional coaches. So collaboration there. It also creates this organized system of data collection. So that whole piece where I always say we have to inspect what we expect. So we pay a lot of money for professional development. We bring a lot of money in for people like Joe Feldman or the Michael Bonners. And so how does that then show up and translate in our classrooms and instructional practices? So it's important to, to collect the data around that. So again, assessing the professional development. And then also identifying those strengths, areas of growth across the district, um, in each building. And then how do we use that to plan for additional or some additional, um, opportunities for professional learning for both teachers and leaders? So, next slide, please, thank you. The Year Two Instruction is really comprised of these, um, four components, uh, huge components of this work. And this was really done in collaboration with folks like Mike Silvestri, the P cap group, um, instructional technology folks, executive directors, um, some of our building administrators, and of course, the members of teaching and learning. So last year, we worked to develop, uh, district-approved, three different, uh, district-approved lesson plan templates that teachers can select from, uh, which also identify some essential components. And you'll see that later on in the PowerPoint presentation. We vetted five technology tools to support with this work and assess in the data, data collection. And I'll share more about that later as well. And then this summer, we really worked on a classroom visitation schedule to really norm the common language and the expectations of what we expect to see in every classroom for every student across the district every day. And so finally, uh, this work is important because a lot of times, just like we're talking about students getting feedback, our teachers need feedback too. And so do our building leaders. And it's all still about the growth aspect, right? So instead of waiting till the AP PR that happens once or twice a year, these classroom visitations will take place on a regular basis. So we can actually see what's lived, breathed and espoused on a regular basis. And also providing that important, high-quality, timely and actionable feedback to support educators and their craft, so they can make those real-time shifts in practices that then impact the students in the classroom right there and then. Next slide, please. In your folder, so I do want to bring your attention to it, you have a copy of the instructional handbook that we created this summer to help guide the work of the lesson planning, the classroom visitation, and the feedback loop. This was, uh, disseminated and shared at, during SAA, the administrators retreat with all the building administrators as well as the district administrators, just to pretty much provide a guideline to what this work looks like and how it will play out for the school year. And there you'll see the, there are three lesson plan templates available for teachers on a Schenectady Learns. And you'll see also within those lesson plans, specific components such as language objectives in addition to the content objectives. That is a PSYOP, or Sheltered Instruction Observational Protocol Strategy, for lesson planning and lesson development. And you'll also see, uh, within those templates, some of the WICHER strategies, which is an avid strategy, being an avid district, um, at the secondary level, where it specifies reading, writing, listening, speaking, um, those type things. That is also aligned to the PSYOP strategies. So we're supporting the literacy piece and that component as part of the lesson planning. And then the last template follows the UBD or Universal By Design Framework. So I just wanted you all to be able to see those three lesson plan templates that teachers can select from that are district-approved. So walkthrough one, walkthrough 1.0. Last year, um, as a department, we identified the district non-negotiables as it relates to, um, classroom walkthroughs, starting with like culture of learning, um, district resources at the very basic foundation. What does the classroom look like, feel like? Are we using restorative practices? That's a part of the culture of learning. Um, the district resources, making sure that they are, uh, approved and not teacher-paid teacher-type materials or those crossword puzzles that Mike was referring to. Um, so those are some things that we put on there. You'll notice that there's a walkthrough tool for literacy as well as for mathematics. And so the, the nice thing is that the literacy components are content-agnostic, so they could be used in other, uh, classrooms outside of the mathematics classroom. And so again, we, we wanted to put something in place, and while it was in Google, Google was not necessarily the most efficient way of collecting the data, and plus, it became too burdensome. We got a lot of feedback from the administrators saying this is just too timely, it's, we can't give immediate feedback from it. So then we had to take that feedback from the practitioners and revamp it. But what I will say is that we really had to take this and move this work from effort to impact. So that's where we're going with the 2.0 piece. So based on the feedback from the administrators, we vetted five different programs or platforms that can provide and help support with this work. We needed something more practical, more user-friendly, so the committee, again comprised of like coaches, our technology folks, assistant directors, myself, we vetted these products. And we found education walkthrough to be that tool. And again, they came out during the August retreat for administrators and provided a two-hour professional development session, showing us how to log on, how to create the template, even though they're not creating the template, it's going to be the district non-negotiable tools. And they got to play around the sandbox a little bit to see how the data is produced, how they could track the time spent in classrooms, which classrooms they went through, maybe identify areas again of growth. So maybe it's by grade level, maybe it's by content area that I need to provide additional professional development or support for teachers or, you know, a teacher. But this is really at the building level for, for building principals and their administrative team to kind of, you know, see, see what they need support with in their buildings. Trying to think. So I did provide some examples of what that would look like for the data that the building principals would pull. I also wanted to share with you the fact that education walkthrough, while they work with 400 different school districts across the country, we worked with them after they won the bid to become Bozey's Adbow. And so we are their first contract in the capital region, so they're really excited by that work. And so I'm really excited for where we will go and how using this platform, hoping to be a model for other districts in the area. But if you click on the link, you'll see the press release and some other information related to education walkthrough. What is really great with this is that, for example, even Jeff Russo created a template that he can use with his safety team. So with him and his supervisors, they're able to... Even Jeff Russo is using the same tool, right? So we created a, he created a district safety survey checklist. So he and his three supervisors will be using this tool to go through and basically check for safety, building safety and readiness, and collect data around that. So we are really excited about this partnership and the full use for how this tool and platform can be used. So walkthrough 2.0, these are additional look-for's that will be added to the, the rubric, basically, in addition to the non-negotiables, and these are the items from the NICE rubric. And really, we shared this electronically, but it also includes these pieces. While this is not evaluative, so I do want to say that, but we did want to align the work, right? So again, if I'm a teacher and my APPR is not scheduled until March, this feedback that's continuous throughout the year from the walkthrough is much more meaningful and gives me the opportunity to implement new strategies, make improvements early enough before I formally evaluate it. I feel like it's almost like that grading for equity piece, but for our adults. So giving them the opportunity to practice these skills, implement the professional development that is provided, and receive the feedback that they need as growth feedback. And then this summer, we also worked on, this is a snapshot, actually, this is a classroom visitation calendar. We really wanted to, again, have that laser focus and identify working in cycles this year, norming what these practices look like, having conversations about it. Principals and APs will go into their buildings, evaluate on what's in there for the first quarter, second quarter, third. You can see it there. And then coming back to reflect on what it is that we saw, what we observed, and then sharing out the feedback. So then we're giving feedback on the feedback, because we also want to improve their craft around feedback delivery. So that is not as so subjective, but we want to make it, you know, something that's meaningful, something that, that the teachers can actually implement. And so, basically, that's what we're doing this year as part of the Year Two Instruction. I'm really excited about this cycles piece, so we're all going to be focused on the same thing. And that's going to be a norming process as well. So I'm looking forward to that data. The good thing is, education walkthrough comes with six additional professional development sessions, so having conversations about what that would look like, and I could actually see them coming back and working with the building administration, I'm gonna have to get on your calendar, for during like principal or assistant principal meetings quarterly, and having some data conversations real-time with the building principals, and then using the other two as a mid-year and end-of-year with the district level. So looking at data from a higher level, district level as well. So the plan still needs to be developed, but these are the instructional priorities. And we're looking forward to being in those classrooms a lot more this year to inspect what we expect, so. That's the handbook and that's the instructional piece. But we also wanted to share some of those priorities that we're focused on for next year around curriculum assessment, instruction, as well as professional development. So I'm doing the blue section. Carmella, I'm gonna pass it to you now.
Because if you haven't heard my voice enough today, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about curriculum and professional learning. Just some updates and some of this you have heard before. So now on our webpage, the grade level expectations have been updated to include health and digital fluency. I'm not gonna read all of this, but you do know we adopted a new social studies curriculum that teachers all received training today. If they came to our Summer Teaching and Learning Institute, they received it in August, and then they didn't have to attend today, so they got a free hour. I'm sure that was helpful for them. Mathematics, we're piloting a curriculum at sixth grade. We talked about that before too. But I think the most exciting piece around curriculum is the academic core enrichment class. You might hear people refer to it as ACE. And so in our district, our students are getting an extra half an hour with certified classroom teachers, not their original classroom teacher. This teacher will be a teacher for all students in the building, where students will be able to learn and practice at their own pace. We've got them working on programs such as iReady, where they're not really having enough time in their classroom, in their ELA and math classroom during those sections, not enough time to practice. So now they'll get an additional time to practice. And we're piloting a program called Smarty Ants, which helps with developmental literacy. We are thinking our kids are gonna love this. It's a lot of fun. Bitmojis and animals that they can kind of make their coaches. It sounds like a lot of fun, and we're hoping that the kids will actually improve in developmental literacy, because now that expectation to practice at home when you sometimes don't have internet or somebody who can sit there and read with you, we're making sure we're doing it. We're not expecting anybody else or assuming anybody else will do it. We're gonna do it. And these teachers I met with them today, they are wonderful, energetic, excited, eager to, to, yes. Every school got at least one teacher. I'm looking at Joe, because Joe interviewed most of them, all of them. And some of the larger schools got a teacher and a half, so a teacher might be traveling. And we're gonna, we're gonna stay very close to these teachers, meet with them frequently, and ask them what's going on, how it's going, and we are gonna look at the data, because we believe that our kids' developmental literacy scores will go up because of this extra time. And their math fluency should go up because of this extra time. So that was that time when the day got extended, this is where it's at right now. So it's an ACE program, and nobody else has it, so thank you for that.
So as far as assessment, I did include the link to the draft assessment calendar, just so that you all can see it. But one of the good things that came out of our, our meeting when it came to the assessment calendar was the fact that our kids keep taking these assessments, assessments, assessments throughout the year. And so looking at the iReady assessment plus the interim assessment, we decided to pretty much marry those during the same window. So while they were doing iReady, which doesn't give like the constructive response or the written short-answer prompts, then they do the interim assessments for another window, and they're doing the multiple choice plus all of those things. They're just gonna do the iReady, and then they're just gonna do a written or constructive response for math or ELA within that same window. So it cuts down on the amount of assessment time and gives more time back to instruction during the school day. So those are some things that came out of that piece. And then at the bottom, it talks about the computer-based testing for the requirements for math and ELA. One of the other things that we're doing instructionally is around this, we're finalizing, I think we pretty much did, the secondary course progression. What is the typical class or course progression for math, science, et cetera? We really worked with the high school team and the school counselors to complete that work, so that's forthcoming. Avid, and one of the other things that we're working on this year is our pre-K through 12 Core Instructional Program Guide. That'll come out in the spring, which talks about the dose of phonics, phonemic awareness, and those other pieces for both math and literacy, as well as the dose for, for ELL students. We're looking at bilingual programming, so what does that dosage look like for those students? So it's very, it's gonna be a very comprehensive document, which we're, we're going to be in until probably March. It's almost like 200 pages, but we'll work on that. And then also, we have a handbook for pre-K that's in draft mode too, so we'll make sure that we share that. And that'll be disseminated to all the parents and agencies, whether they're in district or the CBOs. So just really about norming, having an instructional focus this year. We've got, again, a lot of moving parts, but we want to see how everything is now translating into the classroom, ultimately impacting our students at the end of the day. So it's really about seeing student and academic achievement increasing with more time in the classroom, more time in instruction, those type pieces. So that's where we are for 2023-24. That was short.
I don't know if this question is for you, but you made the mistake of mentioning the CBOs, the community-based organizations.
Yes.
One of the questions, comments, concerns that I had from my own personal experience is my child in preschool then coming in district for kindergarten. There was a communication problem, right? So what was happening in the, the CBO and how he was doing, and then translating that into the classroom? Where does that sit or fall? I don't know whose role and responsibility, but when thinking about instruction and that we do have these contracts with community-based organizations, right? Who are not necessarily in lockstep directly, you know, doing exactly the same thing we do here? How?
So we, we do, we have done a, a good job of reining that in. And if I, if I'm speaking correctly from the past, that hasn't been so tight. So now that we brought Jessica Valenti in, she's, like, she has the handbook now, right? We have the Ecker, so we're going out and she's observing those classrooms. They are using Second Step. They are using the curriculum that we have as well. It's, again, we're in those buildings and being very intentional about it. The state does come in to review. We do participate on those state visits as well. I know this year, we're being even more intentional with making sure that we are providing the opportunity for their pre-K teachers to join with our professional development, because we want to make sure that they're hearing and seeing the same thing. And so, but their schedules are a little bit different. But we're also looking at, I know Jessica's talked to me about doing sister schools, right? So like Magic Kingdom is across the street from Paige.
Paige, yep.
Why isn't there a lot of collaboration, right? So again, the scheduling piece will be tough, but we are having those conversations, because what we don't want to see are significant gaps between our pre-Kers and our CBOs. But if we do, we want to make sure that we're prepared to close those gaps, and what does that look like?
And then just the added layer of when those students already have IEPs in pre-K and then transition into our district. Yep, it's fun.
I'm taking notes.
Board Member Kathy?
Several years ago, we had an estimate of how many additional people were being added for assessment, this kind of thing. With all of, you know, because there were costs associated with that. We didn't really have the money available at that point in time to have it for APPR and, and those kinds of things. How many people are we adding in this classroom visitation schedule for teachers and, and that are, you know, basically doing assessment and, and so on, across the district?
So who, how many teachers are a part of the classroom visitation?
Yeah, and how many, I mean, how many hours are we talking about in a, you know, in a day, in a month? I mean, you've got it all broken out by 25 days and 25 days, those kinds of things. How many, what, what is the, the cost here in terms of time and people and so on?
I don't really think you can put so much of a cost on it.
I'm not talking about dollars.
No, I know what you mean. I know what you mean. Every teacher is included in that classroom walkthrough, and every administrator. So it's, it's a district-wide tool. Am I...
But I'm asking about how, the people who are doing it.
Right. So what we, what we've put in the handbook is that my, the expectation is they hit at least one classroom a day, each administrator, a day. So that would be five a week, minimum.
For an hour, each, each?
No, a classroom walkthrough or visitation is 10 to 15 minutes. It's a snapshot. So it's a, it's a short snapshot. It's not a full formal observation, period.
So Kathy, many of the, all of the administrators had their own tool that they were doing them. They've already been doing them. Now we just have an alignment and a system that we can see, make sure that they're, they're getting done, and also be able to use them and the data to help build better instruction and help teachers.
Yeah, because under the, yeah, under the annual professional performance review, which is the APPR. Yeah, that is part of, there's the walkthrough and there's the formal. And I don't know how many, I don't know how many in the past, I don't remember, how many informals did we have?
This is different.
Okay, so this is separate, so this is in addition to the APPR.
This is non-evaluative. This is separate. This is really the communication and the, and the support that we want to put into place. It's totally separate from the observation, APPR, state.
So I have a question then. So, because I know other districts do walkthrough through the APPR, but it is totally informal. It's not part of their APPR score, so.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Nope. It's really about the practice and the instructional strategies and what's happening in the classroom.
Okay. And Kathy, did you have another question?
No.
Okay. And then with the walkthrough, and I apologize if I missed this. They're going to be honing in on a certain standard. Does the teacher have the say of which standard they would like for the administrator to observe when they come in?
No. So because we want to norm what this looks like, and we, we have to norm our own practice, it's almost like the experimental, the control group, right? We're all doing the same, we're walking the same, it's the instructional focus, specifically, the focus of inquiry. That's what we're, we're referring, referring to those buckets as. And so the building principals can, and I do believe some of them have already shared with, be transparent. It's okay to share this classroom visitation schedule with your building, to let them know, listen, between these dates, this is what we're looking at, right? So when I come into your classroom, I'm expecting to see maybe your lesson plan is out, so, or your objectives are written. Your classroom norms are there. What is the culture of learning? These are the things that we're going to be looking at. So we're being transparent about it. It's not a secret.
And it's in line with the APPR, so that if there's something that needs improvement, they now have the feedback and opportunity to...
You're using the seven standards as your guide, yep, and the elements. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Chisholm.
Thank you.
And the next order of business are the consent agenda items. The consent agenda items includes items that are approved by consent and were previously sent to the board for review. However, single items can be considered separately and taken off the consent agenda by a single member if they wish to do so. Would anyone like a consent agenda item removed?
Yes.
Could you take off 7B?
Seven...
B?
B, yep. Thanks. I'm just looking to see what 7B is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which one is 7B?
Yeah.
Which one is 7B?
7B is civil service, is that correct?
Uh huh.
Okay. So resolutions 5 through 8O, eliminating 7B, as itemized on the consent agenda are presented for approval, I'll accept the motion to approve these items.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy, second?
Second.
Thank you, Vivian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Now, at the request of Erica, board member Erica, we're removing item 7B from the consent agenda item, and we'll vote on it separately after the consent agenda. Do you have any discussion, any thoughts?
No, I just have to abstain.
Okay, you have to abstain, okay. So motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy, second?
Second.
Thank you. Nohalani, VP, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, so...
Abstain.
Erica will be abstaining from 7B. Now, we do want to welcome and congratulate some folks that are on the personnel. Carlos, Dr. Kodo, if you don't mind.
She's doing a phenomenal job as a coordinator of community schools, and she's now moving into that supervisor role, supervisor coordinator that will lead all of our building.
Thank you. And I do want to share with the board that I believe Kayla had sent out this Department of IE newsletter. It's very informative, I'll send it to the board, but I thought it was great. And it has all the names of the parent liaisons with their contact information and some of the upcoming events, so thank you, thank you, congratulations, and...
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna have Andrea first.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you.
And now, on behalf of the superintendent, we are very excited to have Joe DiCaprio join and a new role and continue on with the team. We're not kicking you out yet, Joe. As the Assistant Superintendent of Planning Accountability and New Initiatives, so congratulations. He's done an outstanding job.
And as superintendent, Soler would say, welcome home.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Do you want to go sit with your wife before?
Okay, we have a second opportunity for comments from the public or the board. Any comments? If there is no further business to discuss, I'll ask for motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion? Thank you. Jamaica, second?
Second.
Thank you, Vivian. Any discussion? All in favor?